All right, awesome. I'm gonna ask Carrie to bang the dabble to call us to order.
I just, I just did.
You know, get that in here. All right, thank you everybody. Sorry, this is a little bit, um, a little bit of a different type of meeting. We have two people participating remotely, myself and Nessa Karanti, our vice chair. And both Ness and I are out of town. So if we lose connection, Carrie's gonna take over. If, if I lose connection or if I have to jump off, Ness will jump in. But if both of us lose connection or have to jump off, Carrie will take over and lead the meeting so that Jen can finish three minutes. Is that good for everybody?
Yep.
Awesome, all right. Um, so I will read the following statement. Uh, this, as I mentioned, this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternative means of public access pursuant to chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting is and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. We are recording. Uh, if there are any participants wishing to record this meeting, please notify the chair and start the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's chapter 30A, section 20F, so that the chairman can inform all other participants of set recording. Is anybody else recording? It's Harbor Media, I'm assuming? They are, but don't them?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, so item two on our agenda is approval of minutes. Someone wanna make a motion for the October 11th meeting minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 11th, 2022.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion or updates? All right, hearing none? All those in favor, I'm sorry, we'll have to roll call because we have some remote. So all those in favor, uh, I'll start back to the other way, Ness. Aye. Uh, Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And Matt Cosman actually could not join us tonight, um, so I'm an I as well. So those are approved. All right, um, questions and comments? I'll read the whole statement, I was gonna say, people aren't taking it, I'll read the whole statement. This is our public comment period, uh, so the Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition to that period, we also have set aside 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for any questions or comments that fall under purview of the school committee and are not on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes from our speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the committee. As established by Mass General Law, the responsibilities of the committee are limited to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent, two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district, and three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. Public comment period is not the time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. And just a reminder, in addition to this public comment period, the school committee practice is to provide time for questions and comments, uh, from the public on new business items on the agenda. So with them, is there anyone, um, online or in person who has anything for public comment?
There, there's no one, there's no one here, Michelle Leif. And there's no one online.
Sorry, sorry. I can't see the participants, so nobody on line either?
I can see them and there is nobody raising their hand.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so with that, um, we will move to Dr. Adams for the superintendent's report.
So we had, um, two items as press releases we wanted to share with the school committee. First, um, the Music Man, I had the pleasure of seeing, um, a short performance by the Music Man at the Hingham Arts Walk. We're glad to announce on, beginning on Thursday, December 1st, at 7:00 PM will be the opening session for the Music Man, um, which will include 83 students from both the middle school and the high school. There'll be performances all weekend long on that weekend of December 1st, December 2nd, December 3rd, and December 4th, and you can buy tickets, um, already. It's a show, it's a great production, the kids, um, sound great already, and they still have, um, a couple more weeks of, um, practicing, so we're excited to see them very soon. Additionally, we shared, um, in the packet is, um, an announcement about the Hingham's Unified Sports Program, received the national banner recognition from Special Olympics, and it was an honor to be present also on Friday, um, afternoon in the gym when the banner was raised at the Unified Basketball Game against, um, Waymouth. We're only, uh, we're among 15 schools in Massachusetts to get that honor, um, and one of only 155 nationwide to receive that status. Um, we received that status because we, um, achieve national standards of excellence, both in inclusion, advocacy, and, um, and, um, respect. So we're very proud, um, of that program, um, and that achievement, and celebrate the students, it was a, a great time, it was a lot of fun. Next, I have, um, Amy Jackson is gonna present an update on MECO.
Good evening, everyone.
Sorry, what? Sorry, Dr. Adams, and, um, Amy, I just noticed, I just noticed that someone on the line has her hand up, and I wasn't sure if that was for public comment or something. So Katie Sutton, do you have a question?
Uh, I just, there's a lot of feedback when Dr. Adams speaks, I don't know if I'm the only one experiencing it, but I'm just on Zoom on my phone, and I, I can't, I can't hear anything she's saying. So I don't, maybe I'm the only one, if so, then it's, it must be my technical issue, but I'm at home and I always Zoom from here, so. Is everybody else, can everybody else hear?
Well, I see Laura, and she says, oh, you have their hands up, I'm thinking you're raising your hands to tell me you're also experiencing the same, I'm hearing a little echo.
Yes, that's correct, I, there is a lot of echo, I don't know if the mic is just too close or what?
I moved it a little closer, is that better?
The mics are connected to the Zoom, it's the owl, so who has the Zoom up right now? Do you need to switch the, um, the audio input to the owl?
It is, it is on, it is on.
Nobody can hear what they're saying, it's all that's, the people.
Michelle's on audio was okay for me, um, if Dr. Adams, like, Michelle's audio was fine.
It's the people who are in the room, we can't hear.
Interesting, so I can hear, it's just, there's, I'm just getting a little bit of an echo.
I'm on mute, though.
Okay, you're mute, okay.
All right, is this better? Uh, yes, better, no, still an echo?
No, you know what I'm wondering, and I'm not.
We think it's the.
Same person, but does, is there only one per, is, are there two people on Zoom? Sherri, are you and Jen both on Zoom?
We think it's, we think it's the owl that's giving the echo. I mean, I, I'm happy to disconnect and see if that makes a difference.
Does that still work?
Yeah, try muting it and see. It does.
Is that better?
So sorry, I can't remember what you're saying.
Is that better? No, can you hear? She can't mute.
Now I can't hear if I'm not.
That's all, okay, yeah.
Uh, do you, I'm gonna disconnect and then I'll log back on, see if that helps.
It, it won't, I think it's, like we said, it's the owl.
If I unmute, we're just gonna get more of an echo.
Yes.
We're gonna get that screeching.
Yes. We don't really have a solution, we think it's the owl.
Sorry, saying, what are you, an owl?
It's the owl screeching that's in the room. Can you hear us, Michelle?
I can, it is still kind of echoey, though.
Okay.
It's a little bit better for me than it was before.
Okay. All right, do you want us to go on?
I think so, yes. All right, let's try it and see how it goes.
Okay. All right, Ms. Jackson.
Could you hear? No, it's fine, it's okay. Could you hear me? Yes. Okay, lovely. All right, well, good evening, my name is Amy Jackson, I'm the Hingham MECO director, so I'm here to provide you with just an update on just the vision that I have with the program for the upcoming year. Well, I'm definitely excited to be here, I had a chance to meet with all the students who are just excited to be here, and I just enjoy being with them, I've been in the classrooms, I've been walking the halls, met with all the principals, assistant principals, and just having a really good time. And I'm excited to say that we have 45 students within the Hingham MECO program, 21 in the elementary, 10 in the middle school, and 14 in the high school, which too, we have two lovely seniors who are excited to move on. We have five at East, six at Foster, five at Plymouth River, and five at South. And next year, we are definitely looking to enroll 30 new students to build on our FY24 MECO grant to increase the numbers, and this will be depending on the school committee's approval, and we're excited if you guys approve this, so we can bring more students into Hingham. And the program vision right now, I'm working with the English Director, Mary Andrews, and Principal Smith, and bringing in guest speakers at the middle school, excited to announce that we already have a date for Anthony Valentine's, who is the founder and CEO, or for Coach Mag, he's gonna come in on March 1st to speak with all of the middle school students, and he is a phenomenal motivational speaker for young people, I've used him in the past, and the young people really, really enjoy listening to him, and he is such an inspiration. And I showed, um, Ms. Andrews and Principal Smith a video of him, he spoke at several other MECO districts, and he's just really phenomenal, and they were really excited just to hear him speak, so we're excited to get that going. I'm gonna be working with the PTO and the Hingham Unity Council to get the Host Family Program up and running. We're gonna start with the elementary's, um, families first, cause we feel that's where it's more of like a, a support and a connection for the families just starting off early. So we're gonna meet and we're gonna plan how we're gonna have a kickoff event coming soon. And then also through the MECO grant, we have late buses running Monday through Friday, every day at the high school for the students to participate in sports and activities, and they take full advantage of it, I can say at the high school, I was there today, we had five of them on the late bus. And then we also have a late bus for all the middle school students who are very active in all activities and staying after school for extra help as well. And one of the highlights, um, in partnership with the Roxbury Boys and Girls Club to work to try to get all 14 of our high school students to go on the Black College Tour, and that tour is always during April vacation, and they tour from Alabama to Washington DC, going to over 10 historical black colleges and universities, which is a really, really, opportunity, great opportunity for the students, also working in partnership with Bottom Line, which is a college access program, where they provide advocates and mentors to all the students to work them through the college process, and they also work with the families, closely with the families as well, through financial aid, and which, what I really like about the program is they follow the students throughout their four years, so it's not just a one-stop shop. They continue to work with them throughout the four years as they go through college, helping with scholarships, they help them with the SA, and financial aid with the parents and the students as well. Um, in partnership with New Generations Consulting and Sonya Patton, who's a counselor and life coach, we're gonna start off a MECO parent support group. We're definitely, in these times, I feel is really helpful, especially with COVID, and just, there's just so many things going on, I find it helpful just to provide that support for parents, so they can support their children, especially around the social emotional piece, and that's gonna happen every other month for our families, the first one, we're gonna kick it off in November. And the next one, in partnership with other MECO directors, I have a partnership with the FBI, and we're gonna do a workshop on internet safety, which I feel is just so, so important right now, for families to know and understand when your child is on internet and on social media, how you need to really pay attention. So we're gonna have one of the FBI agents come and do a workshop on November 15th with all the MECO families on that. And next, what I'm excited about is I have volunteered to go on the Washington DC trip to support our students. I have solidified that today, and the kids are really excited, so the goal is to get all five of my students to go, so that's my update for now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hi, thank you very much, Amy, um, the problem is, we really can't hear. Um, Ness, are you having the same?
I'm so sorry.
I'm getting a bunch of, I'm getting a bunch of, and it's not, it wasn't you and me, it's, it's just everybody, it's, there's a really bad echo. So getting a bunch of emails and texts from people saying they can't hear, is it, and Jen, you did log off, I think, which I thought might help, that if it was only one person on Zoom in the meeting, but. I don't know if anybody can do anything to help.
Do the owls potentially have internal mics that are echoing off the, the spot mics? Okay.
Could you hear me now? Yeah. It might be all the mics.
Right, yeah.
Are they frozen?
I think the camera's frozen now, too.
Yeah, Michelle is, oh no.
There you go. Ness is frozen. Yep.
It's a little bit coming in here, I don't know.
Yeah, it's the, does it sound any different, Michelle?
Is it different, Michelle? Or the same?
It's a little better, it, I'm not hearing the echo, but it sort of sounds like you're talking in a tunnel.
Ew, is that the volume on it?
Can you lower the volume, would that help? Is that better?
Does that help?
Is that better?
Um, trying, can you say something again?
Is that better?
Is that better?
It's better, it's, it's just strange, it's like, there's still a bit of an echo, although it seems less of an echo.
So we, what we, what we did was we turned the volume down on the owls, wondering if that's the echo that's causing it, so she, so she's trying to turn it down even more, is it getting any better?
It's getting better, yes.
Okay, that must be it, and then we can turn.
Can you just put one owl on, maybe they're talking to each other?
She can turn the volume down on the one on the left, too.
Now it's not better, sorry.
Now it's not better. I'll just keep talk, I'll just keep talking. We're just making you. How about now, is it any better now? Is it worse?
Sorry, no, I think it's worse.
Okay, it's worse, so we're, if it's worse, then we're gonna turn it back up. How about now, is it worse or better?
What's different this time?
Better or worse?
There's actually, I've gotten feedback from people on Zoom at home in previous weeks, and they've also said that they've had trouble hearing us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I feel like it's been a lot of weeks since we've been getting this feedback, should we maybe get someone to come in and, who knows what they're doing and consult about the sound.
Right.
It needs to work for other groups, I guess.
I know. All right, what do you wanna do, Michelle?
Hold it in again and see that works.
Search Nathan Tesla.
You're muted.
Really impossible, it's almost impossible to hear, I'm listening, are you having the same, or having the same issue?
See, we can hear you so clearly, too.
Sherri, is your, the volume, I, I don't think this has anything to do with it, but is the volume on your, you're having it?
Just to make sure, no, sorry, I don't think it.
No, because when I, it was changing it, it changed.
Okay.
So I did the same thing, I had turned it down like that before.
Well, we can just not use the owl.
Yeah, do we just have everyone join Zoom, and if we speaker, unmute to, to Zoom? Yeah.
Might be the best solution.
There's a little camera, though, unless we use the owl.
Sherri, what happens if you unmute?
Yes, echo.
It's not muted.
It's not muted.
No, cause when I muted it, then they can hear.
You can't hear at all.
Because my audio is connected to the owl, so if you look like the settings, it says echo, canceling, same here.
You're setting the speaker to mute the owl, not the, oh, camera.
What if the microphone's near her camera, near her computer?
Take the owl off of the speaker.
Take the owl off of this one.
There should be, um, there should be a speaker for the projector, I believe.
That's a good point.
If you can hear us, Michelle, we're trying a couple different things right now. Now we can't hear you.
Now they can't hear.
Yeah. I mean, we could have them, I could have them on my, if I log back into Zoom and I mute myself, we might be able to. No, because then they won't be able to hear us, that won't, that won't help.
We'd have to each log in and unmute as we're speaking.
Yeah. Do you wanna do that, Michelle, we're just saying we could. We'd get an echo, though, if we all unmuted.
The echo is gone, the echo is gone, so what I just didn't hear, you said, you just have to talk louder.
Okay. Well, we weren't talking into the mics, so that's good, we were just talking about possibly joining Zoom, to see if that makes it better, but if you can hear us better now.
We can definitely hear you.
Okay, that's good, that's good. I don't know what we did, but it worked.
And just, if you don't mind, cause there's several participants on, could people just raise their hands if they can now hear better than they did before? I'm not gonna call them, people, I just wanna make sure everybody can hear better.
Can.
One hand up?
Well, like, um, no.
Two, two hands up.
Kristen, Sarah, Sean, Joe, do you, do you hear better now, can you raise your hands?
Can you hear us better in the room?
Much, much better.
The people in, okay.
All right. I think, I think everybody on line can hear better, it looks like it.
Does Sherri remember what she did?
We'll have to remember what we did.
So just, sorry about that, um, thank you for whatever magic you just gave me.
It might actually be magic, since no one knows what we did.
Yeah, I know.
Secret.
Yeah.
Amy, I hate to ask, but the reason is that we, the fact it was so good, and I feel like so many people missed it, and I feel like the MECO program is really important to the district, would you mind taking it from the top?
Sure, could you hear me?
It'll be even better the second time.
You're supposed to hear it.
Okay, is it, could you hear me now? Lovely.
Yes.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Alrighty, so I'll just take it, I'll start from enrollment, we currently have 45 students in the MECO program, 21 in the elementary school, 10 in the middle school, 14 in the high school, and we have two lovely seniors, five at East, six at Foster, five at Plymouth River, and five at South. And next year, our plan is to increase enrollment and to bring in 30 new students, and this is subject to the approval of the school committee, and we're gonna submit that in the FY24 MECO grant to increase the enrollment, really excited about that. And program vision, right now I'm working with Ms. Andrews, the English Director, and Principal Derek, to bring in guest speakers, and we have confirmed Anthony Valentine, who is the CEO and the founder of Coach Mag, and he's confirmed from March 1st, he's gonna come in and speak with the middle school students, he is a phenomenal motivational speaker for young people, several other MECO districts have used him before, and the students just really, really enjoy his message. Working with the PTO and the Hingham Unity Council, we're going to plan to start a Host Family Program, and we're gonna start with the elementaries, we find that the elementaries probably is where we need to start, because it's really hard for families just to make that connection. And so we're gonna, um, work together to figure out a kickoff event and have a, a nice, um, start off date for that. And next, we have a MECO late bus for all our high school students from Monday through Friday, it leaves at 5:00 every day, and our students are definitely, um, loving that, and they take advantage of it every single day for extra help, and they also participate in sports, and we also have a late bus for our middle school students who are actively participating in different activities and also extra help in the afternoon. And the highlight, um, in partnership with the Roxbury Boys and Girls Club, to try to have all 14 of our high school students participate in the Historical Black Colleges and University Tour, which they tour, um, 10 colleges from Alabama to Washington DC. And in partnership with the Bottom Line College Access Program, we're gonna have a speaker come and speak with all the high school students on college readiness, and what I really like about Bottom Line is they actually pair up a mentor with each student to work with them through the college process, and they follow them throughout the four years of college, working on their SA and financial aid throughout the years. And next, working with New Generations and with Sonya Patton, who is a counselor and life coach, we're gonna start a MECO parent support group for our families, and this is something that families really, really, um, need, I've used her before in the past with families, and they really enjoy it. And she talked on different topics on socio-emotional issues, how to deal with teen issues, and parents can actually come with their own topics or just discussions about different issues that are happening with their children, and she really worked with them and just walked them through different techniques and different processes that they can use to help their families. And which what I'm really excited about is in partnership with the FBI and working with other MECO directors, we're gonna do a parent workshop on internet safety and social media safety, which I feel is just so critical, that parents really need to know how to monitor their children on social media. And I was really excited, the FBI was like, absolutely, we will come out, I was like, yes, thank you, cause they would give all the background and all the information to families to help out. And last but not least, I am going on the 8th grade DC trip with the students as a chaperone. Here you go, did you hear me?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
All right.
And thank you for being a chaperone for the trip, that's amazing, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That is a really, that's some really great work, some, um, really great updates, so I appreciate your time and your, uh, courtesy in redoing it for us. I see Ness has some questions? If you don't mind taking some questions?
Oh, no problem, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I'm gonna just shut off my video, just so I don't lose, um, power here, um, but I appreciate you going through that a second time, it, it, I am in awe of how much you have, um, been able to do it. Since your short time here in September, all the programs that you had mentioned sound fantastic, the partnership with Roxbury Boys and Girls Club sounds like a great opportunity for the high school students, um, and I'm really happy to hear about the host families. I'm part of the FTE team, as you know, and we heard back, um, feedback during our courageous conversations that, um, families were looking through us to, to do that again, um, so I'm really grateful that that's coming back. And then the family parent workshop sounds like a great support and. Work, and I know that you appreciate this, but I don't think everybody else appreciates how difficult it is for some of these students to come to our school, uh, from another district, oftentimes, they don't necessarily feel like they're part of any community, they feel like they're in limbo, they, they don't feel part of the community that they're coming from, and they don't necessarily feel part of this, this community, cause they're not completely ingrained, um, so I'm grateful that we're starting to talk about, um, having more families involved and doing host families again, um, and hoping that we can extend the involvement of these students beyond school. And I know that there have been, um, mention in the past, and I don't know if we've talked about this, but, um, any town sports, I know that the Hingham Sports Partnership and some of the teams around town, they have stated that any MECO student, um, would be, you know, open, they'd be welcome with open arms to participate in that, so maybe we could think about that as well.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, so these are just more, more feedback, and I, and I appreciate that you just got here, but, um, I just wanted to kind of hit on those couple things, just to. To kind of get, um, get more opportunities for the kids to feel part of our community. And, you know, the ability for them to be able to participate in the foreign after-school programs is, is huge for them to, uh, just feel part of, feel part of Hingham, uh, so I appreciate it, so thank you, no questions, but just more comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michelle, Tim is asking to be recognized.
I agree with everything Ness said. It's wonderful to meet you across the table, and final, really impressive all the work that you've been doing. I just had one sort of question about both the Blath College Shore and the Bottom Line College Access Program. I was just wondering how were those funded?
So the executive director of the Roxbury Boys and Girls, she writes a grant every year to fund the program for all the students who want to participate.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
And bottom, sorry, Bottom Line is just a college access program.
Okay. I know they're not Hingham programs, but I was just making sure that all students had access and.
Anyone else with any questions or comments for Amy?
No, just, thank you. It sounds like you've, you've hit the ground running, and yeah, this is all really encouraging, and I'll just echo what Ness said about the host families. People have been talking about that for a long time, so it's great that you're getting it going.
Yes, I would just like to, I would just add, Amy, thank you very much. This is really some great work. It's a great update. Very supportive of all of the initiatives that you are continuing and the ones that you are initiating for the district. I particularly love the thought too, and efforts that we're going to undergo to expand the program next year, so grateful for that, and whatever we can do as a committee to help with that, let us know.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
If it's okay, Michelle, with permission of the chair, can Amy talk about the grant that's on the agenda for a little later?
Yeah, that would be fine. So I think that's item seven point six.
Yes, she can just give a, an explanation.
That would be great.
So I was able to write a grant, it was three of them, from the MECO headquarters, it's the arts grant, and I was granted all three. Which I'm really excited. I didn't think I was going to get all three, but I got all three. So one is for Originations Inc., which is a dance company, so they will come and do a performance at any of the schools. We just have to let them know. The second one is Dialogues of Diversity. It's called Get Out of Your Bubble. So it's sort of like a game show about culture, which I thought I would be really excited for either the middle school or the high school. And then the third one was Lynn, oh, I'm forgetting his last name. He's a storyteller. He actually performed at South on last Friday, which was really good. The students really enjoyed him. So the goal is to have him go to all the schools this year, since we received the grant. So those were the three grants.
Thank you. And we have on the agenda to, they vote on those, to accept them? Dr. Adams, do you want us to do that now?
No, I think it's okay to do it a little later, but yes.
Do it later, okay. That's a background for now. Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next in the superintendent's report was the budget calendar for FY twenty-four. The Finance and Capital Subcommittee reviewed the budget calendar, so it's in here for your information. As you can see, we've already gotten started with starting to collect budget information, individual meetings with principals and members of transportation and facilities to begin the work of planning the FY twenty-four budget, and you'll see it brings us all the way up to town meeting and town election. Mr. Pong, you want to add anything else about the budget calendar?
Just that we, we are on our way now in terms of getting it going, and we've made contact with the Advisory Committee and other committees as well to, to at least have some dates written into the calendar. And we've gotten some feedback from some of those groups as well. So we're on our way, basically.
I just had one question on that. So for the school councils, it looks like they get looped in, in December. Would it make sense to loop them in earlier, just given their role in the building-based budgets?
I think our intent was, I'm not sure we'll be ready before then, so I think that we were hoping that that principals would be able to communicate in, in school councils early in December as we're meeting with the Finance and Capital Subcommittee. So through that process, getting feedback before coming to you in January. If we can do it sooner, we will certainly try to get it to the November school council meeting, but I don't think we're going to be quite ready to present that, those school councils. Certainly, principals will be having conversations about the budget and some of the initial conversations we've had with their school councils in November. We also have a date on the books for a school council kind of training date.
Oh, great.
I think it's November seventeenth, where we're doing the annual school council training. I think it's a Thursday, fourteen, fifteen, yeah, I think it's November seventeenth, to do a school council training, where we'll bring together school councils and talk about the budget process for FY twenty-four. We'll talk about school improvement planning. That will be sort of, you know, sort of generating all the requirements that school councils have oversight over, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We also included in the budget, in the packet, the FY twenty-two budget final expenditures and summary of expenditures. You have a list of the final summary budget to actual, and then a description of the actual expenditures. Do you want to add anything, Ayesha?
The committee also, the Finance Committee also reviewed this information as well, and we went through any questions they had as well, too, and vetted those questions with them as well. Just to kind of add that.
Next, we have the South Shore Collaborative Update, which included, we had a meeting a couple weeks ago where the FY twenty-two end-of-year report was reviewed, and it was approved by the board. In addition, we looked at FY twenty-three financial report, and the outlook is good. They also reported that they came into agreement with their bargaining units. They agreed to three-year contracts through the AFT for both their Unit A staff and paraprofessionals. They also lost their Director, Director of Student Services and have appointed an interim student, Director of Student Services. You have that information also in your packet. And then the last piece is the estimated, estimated rate of inflation from the Operational Services Division. They're required every year by October first to provide an estimated rate of inflation for approved private special education programs. So you'll see in that information that their analysis results in an estimated rate of inflation of fourteen percent for private special education programs for the fiscal year twenty-four. So that's there for your information. They base those rates on estimated rate of inflation, and you'll see their projections across different categories for that information, and we'll be using that in our budget discussions. We'll be talking a lot about that potential increase as we go into budgets. And it's, that's it?
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, we can move on to item five, communications. Do you have any communications, Dr. Adams?
Nope. Nope. Thank you. Awesome.
Alright. So we will go to our student representative, Nathan. Do you, Nathan, do you have any student communications for us?
I think a lot that I was going to cover about, I was going to mention the play and the unity project. Unified sports flag that we just put up, and I think that was all covered by Dr. Adams. The other stuff I mentioned was that the Student Advisory Committee just had our first meeting with the school committee, and during that, I thought that was pretty successful, and we kind of outlined a plan with that for the year. Additionally, on the Student Advisory Committee, our members have worked out to reaching out to elementary schools and the middle schools and trying to get some more student interaction there. Because we do have the Student Advisory Committee set up at the high school and me attending these meetings, but I was only really elected by the high school students and could really only represent that perspective, so we're trying to bring in some younger student perspectives through that. So we've allocated one, each rep has taken on a different school, and they're going to be working with the principals there to kind of bring in some more student voice. Additionally, one thing we talked about with the school committee is any efforts to bring out student turnout and student awareness of the upcoming special town meeting and election. I was just thinking about that right now, and I might try and either send out an email announcement or a video announcement to a school that would just kind of outline what the election is, what's on the ballot, and just bring, oh, I'm sorry about that. Bring awareness to students, especially those who are eligible to vote. Just about Foster School and why we need that program, but I will keep it pretty neutral so as not to influence any voting. That's something that I'll be doing pretty soon. Yeah. I'm excited. It's my first election that I can vote in, so. Those are what's going on at the high school and the schools in general. Do you guys have any questions?
That is. Sorry, is somebody speaking or?
I'm just asking for any questions.
Okay. No, thank you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you for particularly the engagement and outreach to the elementary and middle schools. I know we had talked about that a little bit last year, and pulling, trying to find ways for the Student Advisory Council to get feedback and, and you know, just get some engagement from the other schools, so really appreciate that you have found some ways to do that by connecting with the principal, so really do appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think in fact Trevor, who's our other senior rep, is going to be attending some type of meeting at South very soon, so I'm, yeah, I'm really excited for that. We've already gotten started with those meetings.
That's great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for Nathan?
Nope.
Nope, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Five point three is any other communications, any other communications from anyone on the committee?
Nope.
Alright, great. Alright. Item six is unfinished business, but look at us, we don't have any, we're so involved, we're being finally. Alright, so we have a number of new business items to attend to, though, a couple of grants, some field trips. So, Dr. Adams, do you want to, I don't know if anyone else is in the room, but there, seven point one is a proposed student trip to New York in March of twenty twenty-three. I don't know if Mr. Zinkata or anyone else is there to talk to that one?
Yes, we have someone here. Coming up.
Oh, it's Pedro.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for, for inviting me tonight and for having this on the agenda. The music department at Hingham High School travels every year. Band and orchestra typically travel together. Sometimes band, orchestra, and chorus travel together. Sometimes chorus travels to a different location on their own. So this is a really exciting year, because it's, it's, we, we rotate so that students can go to a different location. They don't repeat, we don't repeat any trips within four years. So last year we went to Nashville, and it was an amazing couple of days, and then this year, coming up in the spring, we're going to New York City. It's a bus trip, open to all of the students in band, chorus, and orchestra. It's a three-night trip, and some of the highlights include a, a number of really tremendous performances that are going to be happening. We're going to go see the New York Philharmonic play at David Geffen Hall at Lincoln Center. It's going to, that particular concert is going to feature some Stravinsky, as well as a contemporary double concerto written for the great jazz bassist Esperanza Spalding, so we'll go see her perform. We're going to be seeing a production, a, a concert at Jazz at Lincoln Center. It's a Duke Ellington special performance. And we're going to go see a number of Juilliard pre-college high school recitals. It's, it's in a, the exact arrangement and instrumentation of those recitals has not been established yet, but we've been two other times to see these Saturday performances by students the same age as our students, and we've seen people perform at this particular day of events that have gone on to great solo careers afterwards. So it's a really exciting time to be able to see them at the beginning of their career, and to see our students interact with them socially is a lot of fun. So we'll do some museums and, and, you know, build a community and dine together and spend a lot of time on a bus together, and it's going to be amazing. So are there any questions, other questions about our trip or our travel in general at the high school?
My kids are already going, so I don't have questions.
There's a lot of arts representation in this room. This is so exciting.
I'll add that I went to Nashville last year, and it was great.
Thanks, Nathan. Nashville and New York are my, are my two favorite trips that we do, so I'm very excited.
Sounds like an awesome trip.
Yeah.
I got to figure out if I'm going.
These are great, and so thank you, Pedro, to Brian Zinkata, yourself, and Joe Young for putting this together, and just for folks listening at home, I also appreciate you including the information around insurance, financially. Those are our usual, you know, vaccination help, related issues, those are our usual questions, but you've covered them all in here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, if anyone, if there are no questions, then I would accept a motion to approve the field trip?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed student field trip to New York in March twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, no more discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Ness? Aye. Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And an aye and an aye as well. You're approved for your field trip. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I wonder if they're just going to start having school committee members chaperone these trips.
Waiting for my invite.
Always looking for them. Alright, seven point two is to inform the committee on the program review process. There isn't act as appropriate on here too, but I don't know if we have to take action and determine that. So, Dr. Adams, is that, Dr. Adams, you're going to give a better fakers, Katie Roberts going to?
Sure, I'll pass it off to Ms. Roberts. We met with the Curriculum Subcommittee and shared this program review process, which would outline a process over many years to sort of support a deep program evaluation of each of the curriculum areas that we have, so I'll pass it off to Katie.
Great, thank you. So for those of you who have been on the committee for a while, you'll understand that this has been a conversation a few years in the making. So both on the curriculum director's side and the school committee's side, we've been in conversation about ways to make the program review process more impactful, a little less show and tell and a little more strategic. And so to that end, we did do a bit of research, including Dr. Adams was kind enough to share a process that she used in Melrose, surveyed some area districts, including Duxbury, that use a two-year process for program review. And basically, year one is a self-study and year two is action planning. And as Dr. Adams mentioned, in total, it's a seven-year cycle, with the two years of active program review, followed by five years of implementation. And so in the first year of self-study, year one, a team would be assembled, which would be consisting of the assistant superintendent, curriculum director of the appropriate department, and/or coordinator, a few teachers from that department. We'd pull in a special educator for input and a principal as available, and the team would first develop essential questions to focus the self-study. There would be during that year one, a gathering of curriculum documents, instructional resources, and program data for analysis. During that time, we would seek community feedback on the program offerings. We would also, this is a new feature, review program of studies from other area districts to help us seek out some new ideas and perhaps some innovative ideas, which might include site visits to select districts that have particular programs of interest that might help us in our research. Reciprocal site visits to HPS might also be part of the process. And at the end of that year one, the team would write just a brief memo summarizing the stages of that self-study. And year two is when the action planning would really take place, and during that year, the program review team would construct a report with really specific recommendations. And that would include any curriculum updates and changes, any professional development that might be needed to strengthen the program or. development that might be needed, um, to strengthen the program or, um, meet whatever goals have been set. Um, this will also provide data for budgeting purposes as well. Um, so some of these, um, initiatives might involve piloting, um, new curriculum materials and so on. So we'd need to dedicate, um, appropriate, uh, resources, um, to that, um, process. Um, so we do, in addition to having, um, kind of an outline of, um, the protocols of the different stages, um, we also did include at the very end, um, a suggested timeline for the different departments. So each year, uh, we would have, uh, one of the major, um, content areas, um, presenting along with, uh, one of the smaller departments. And we tried to partner them up in logical ways with, um, science and, um, in industrial technology, for example, partnering up ELA and, uh, library media partnering up, um, on those, um, um, different years. And so again, in summary, it will be a two-year process followed by five years of, um, implementation. And during those five years, it will still be a continuous cycle of improvement, adjusting, refining, um, as we go. And, um, also wanted to thank Andy Hoy, who will be our first, um, pilot, uh, uh, team, uh, chair. Um, so social studies is first on deck, uh, followed by world language next year. So Andy Hoy will, uh, refine this process for us and Erica, uh, will continue that work next year with, with world language.
I think it's important too to say that, that it doesn't mean that those departments in those curriculum areas aren't in a cycle of continual improvement, but are like not waiting to be reviewed in order to, to continue to develop curriculum, strengthen professional development. This is just an opportunity for an in-depth review and process that allows us to gather feedback from multiple stakeholders and develop an action plan as a result. So I think it's important for everyone to know it's this, everybody's, we're working on strategic plan and a continuous cycle, but this is that opportunity for this in-depth process. Um, you'll find that this process is not an unusual one, that it is, uh, one that you would find in many districts across the state. Um, that is a, it's a, it's just a thoughtful way to continue to improve curriculum teaching and learning, um, in a thoughtful way over many years.
Michelle, I have a question. Sorry, I can't tell if you can see me or not. Um, do you find, or did you find in other districts and with your past experience that like that five-year implementation period is kind of the sweet spot for our curriculum to run its course or with licenses?
It's an interesting question, Ally, and, um, we're never quite sure when DUCI will release new standards. Um, and so that is one of the challenging pieces. And so, um, the visibility in terms of what might be coming in terms of bigger picture is, is difficult to imagine. So this would be a proposed and suggested, um, timeline, but in terms of, um, adopting curriculum, seven years is a sweet spot. So in most cases, when you're purchasing new curriculum, it comes with a six to seven year, um, license. And so in terms of new curriculum, that, that would be a sweet spot.
Excellent.
I think this is really exciting and it's obviously so crucial for a school system to be constantly innovating if we're going to stay on the forefront. Uh, but my only comment about it was just keep, uh, the Hingham Educational Foundation in line, in mind when looking for partners and, uh, innovative projects that might come as a result of this.
Absolutely. They've been terrific partners over the years, so.
Nathan has a question.
A quick question.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, just one quick question about reviews. So does the review just focus on the curriculums within the coursework we have right now, or does it also look at, at least at the high school level, adding additional courses in those topics? Is that a topic of , uh, reviews?
That's a great question, Nathan. So yes, as part of this process, and it will be, um, in part about innovating and continuing to grow and expand. And, uh, one of the main pieces that we're adding, um, to the program review process is this review, a program of studies of other district, which is not something we've, we've done in any kind of methodical way. We've certainly, um, done that on, on occasion, but this will kind of embed that in the process. And I do think, um, the opportunity, um, to go on site visits to other districts that might have innovative programs, um, might really yield some interesting, um, areas for future development.
Right. Thank you so much.
Michelle, I have a question. Um, I just was wondering if there's something that, that the policy, do we need to adjust our curriculum policies around that?
The policy basically states that the superintendent will develop a process.
Yes.
So.
I didn't know if we would need to, once it's approved, if we need to add that in or if we can just leave it.
As, yeah, the way it says.
I mean, I, I mean, add in the details is all, is all I was asking.
So I think.
But we can leave it, just leave it as is. I get it.
Long as it's citing that we have a, a program review process instituted by the superintendent, I think, um, I think that embeds it, but.
Okay. I do have other questions, really.
Certainly.
Separate from the policy question. Um, and then just the, the beginning cycle, I didn't know if you could just quickly, is there any changes, immediate changes based on the list that you kind of, where you decided which one to do first and second or third or?
So during COVID, our program review process basically was paused. We did do a few of them, but we paused and significantly slowed down the timeline. Um, social studies was next on deck, um, in our rotation, so it made sense to start there. It also made sense to start there in terms of, um, Andy, um, Hoy and his department did have some new standards. And so there's a lot of active work being done, as you know, on the civics project on the standards alignment. And so for many reasons, um, starting with social studies made sense. Andy also, uh, went through the process when he was a department director in Duxbury, so has some experience with the two-year process. So for many reasons, um, it made sense to start with that department.
Thank, thank you for explaining that.
I think one of the challenges is when you go through the program review process, there's this instinct to go, you find something, you're like, oh, we should change that. And your instinct is to sort of just jump in and start changing things, but, um, I've always advised staff to sort of, okay, slow down. Let's really collect the information and be very purposeful about really thoughtfully reflecting and then make changes. So it's kind of this instinctual piece to sort of change things and, and automatically, but you think, no, this is really to really document what we currently have. Um, and look at what's possible and really see all the possibilities and what's innovative and what we can be added to strengthen our current programs and curriculum, um, and then make an action plan. So it's, it's sort of a challenge to slow people down a little bit, but.
All right, that is great. Thank you. Sorry, um, any other questions from anyone on the committee? All right, that is, um, really great overview. Thank you. Um, nothing to act on with this item, correct, Dr. Adams? I know we're going to, we have, I mean, seven point three about the name of the committee, but this, for this purpose, this was just an update, correct?
I think because of the policy, we're sort of informing the school committee of the process moving forward.
Okay. All right. So we don't need to take action on it?
I think not.
Perfect. All right. All right. Well, then we will move on to seven point three, which we do have to take action on. Um, so this is to discuss remaining the probably not very actively named curriculum subcommittee and act as appropriate. Um, Tim, I'll let you take this. Um, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. Just a brief background, uh, the curriculum committee was started last year. I think from the beginning, I think the name curriculum committee didn't really describe what the committee did. Uh, and also made a lot of people really nervous that school committee was becoming involved in places where school committee should not be involved. I think for the most part, school committee should not be active within the teacher's classroom, uh, because that is not under our purview. Uh, and curriculum made it sound like that's what we were intending to do, which is not our intention. Uh, we're really looking at the program of study, um, and sort of the big picture look, not the focused on individual classrooms. So we, changing it just basically because it more accurately describes what the committee will do. So changing it to the educational programming committee, uh, is the, uh, I guess suggestion that the people on the former, um, I guess current curriculum committee have, uh, suggested. Uh, so I don't know if, if we have any questions about that or if I can just make a motion.
I would be delighted to make a motion.
Sure. I move to rename the curriculum, uh, subcommittee of the school committee into the educational programming subcommittee of the school committee.
I will second that.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Um, any discussion or question from anyone on the committee? All right, with that, then I will take a roll call vote. Ness? All right. Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well. Wait, thank you very much, everyone. I think that makes, that maybe makes a lot more sense and a lot more clarity around the role of that subcommittee. So thank you for the effort that's on that, Jen. Um, great, item seven point four, we're going to turn it over to Carrie, she's going to have the floor for a while, to go through the, um, proposed mask resolutions. And, um, we'll vote on, uh, let's vote on each of them independently. Carrie, does that make sense?
Yep. And just to clarify, mask is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, so, um, I sent this to everyone and I'm just going to assume everyone read it and not read it all. It's for everyone's pleasure, but, um, I'll just go through the, the resolution piece and then like a couple of sentences on what, what it's, why it's being proposed and then we can talk about it. Um, so the first one is resolution one, number one regarding sanctuary laws for transgender students. And the resolution is therefore be it resolved that Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the great and general court to join with other states in the passage of so-called sanctuary laws. To ensure such children and their families have the power of enjoying and safety and tranquility, their natural rights, rights and the blessings of life as guaranteed by the constitution of the Commonwealth. So this, um, is calling on the legislature to pass the sanctuary law for transgender students, um, and that would protect transgender students and their families who cross state lines to obtain medical care. Um, and I guess this came about because some other states have been, um, passing some laws that call for families to be prosecuted if their child receives medical care, um, their transgender receives medical care, um, even if it happens in another state. So other states have reacted to that by passing sanctuary laws and, um, MASC is, the proposal is to, um, to, uh, to, that Massachusetts do the same. Um, and I, I just wanted to also say it, it's kind of, um, it effectively reinforces a Massachusetts law passed in 2011, an act relative to gender identity. So it's not new, it's just adding extra protections. So, does anyone have any questions or comments? Um, okay, I'm going to make a motion that the Hingham School Committees, uh, support resolution number one regarding the sanctuary laws for transgender students.
And I will second.
Um, any other discussion? All right, I have seen none, then I will take a roll call vote. Ness? Aye. Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. So that is a unanimous vote. All right.
Okay, resolution number two is to increase the maximum balance allowed by Special Education Reserve Fund. And this resolution is therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to amend chapter forty, section thirteen E by deleting, quote, "two percent of the annual net school spending," quote, end quote, and by inserting the following, quote, "five percent of the annual net school spending," end quote. Um, so this one would increase the maximum balance allowed by the Special Education Reserve Fund in each district. Um, Hingham does have one. And it would, it would allow the districts to keep, um, it would change from two percent of their annual net school spending to five percent. Um, so increase the amount that districts are allowed, would be allowed to keep in those. Um, the funds are in place to stabilize school budgets in the event that a student unexpectedly needs an out-of-district placement in the middle of the fiscal year. Um, these tuitions are very high, ranging from fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, dollars per year per student, um, plus transportation costs. Um, and the idea behind this is to enable districts to provide a free and appropriate education in a least restrictive environment without destabilizing the school budget. Um, and as we heard earlier about the inflation increase, um, I think it's a good idea. So. Does anyone have any questions?
Just clarifying, the two percent, the five percent is a cap, not a?
Yes, it's a cap. Yep.
Okay. So we, it doesn't necessarily make us change anything about how we do our budget.
That's right. Yep. Yep.
What percent do we currently put in?
It's, I think, I usually would know, is it two percent right now? I think we're, we're at, we're at the max.
Our special education stabilization time? Is that a two percent?
I think it's a two percent, yes.
Yep. Yep. So, and just to clarify, none of these are binding. This is, this is to encourage the MASC to advocate for these things and to show our support for it. So I will make a motion to, um, support resolution two to increase the maximum balance allowed by Special Education Reserve Fund.
And I will second.
All right, any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote for, uh, second resolution. Ness? Aye. Thank you. Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
All right, and I am an aye as well.
Okay, resolution number three is membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for the enactment of legislation to repeal the provision of Massachusetts law that prohibits practicing educators and sitting school committee members from serving on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls for legislation to reconstitute the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education by including members with expertise as licensed educators and members with expertise in public school governance. So this one, um, would change the, or would encourage the legislature to change the membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Under current law, uh, practicing educators and school committee members are prohibited from sitting on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And this calls on the legislature to change the laws so the teachers in the school committee can sit on the BESE and to further reconstitute the BESE so that they would be required to be on there. Any questions?
I do a quick comment.
Yeah.
Just adding on to that, um, I do serve on the, uh, state advisory committee, um, for the, uh, Massachusetts. And we do elect the student rep to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, um, Eric Planke. And talking to him, I've had some opportunities to talk to him in person and one-on-one, and he has expressed some frustrations to me. And the other members of the state advisory committee, uh, as a student rep, that he feels that it would, he's told the, um, state advisory committee that he thinks that it would be a lot better if teachers and, um, teachers would be able to serve on that committee because he feels like the actual stakeholders in the, um, in the schools are really underrepresented in compared to other interests on that board because they only have, um, one student rep and one parent rep. So I just thought I'd add that as another perspective on that.
Yeah, that's great, Nathan. Thank you.
Just, just because it's worth quoting, "The teaching profession is the only profession or trade in Massachusetts where the holders of a license are prohibited from serving on its governing board, its own governing board."
Right.
So that was the, uh, eye-opening.
All right, I will make a motion to support resolution number three, membership of the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education.
And I will second that.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Aye. Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Seems like a bad time for that one.
Okay, so number four is, um, preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. And therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to restore local governance and accountability for Lawrence, Holy, Holyoke and Southbridge Public Schools, no later than July one, twenty twenty-three. And be it further resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls on the Massachusetts Legislature to enact legislation to limit any future state takeovers to a term of no more than three years. So this, um, concerns three districts that are under receivership, Lawrence, Holyoke and Southbridge. Um, and they're currently under receivership and the, um, the allegation here is that, um, looking at the test scores, graduation rates, college enrollment, many of the goals that were in place for these, um, districts when they went under receivership were not met. And, um, there's no timeline to take them out of it. So they're, um, they're asking us to support, um, to have a, putting a deadline on the receivership and then also to, um, put a, a timeline for future, um, districts that go into receivership and so that they're governed by their local school committees instead of by the State Department of Education. So, any questions on this one?
I would just add that the length of time that these schools have been in receiverships, um, ranged from two thousand eleven to twenty sixteen. That is a very long time to be run by receivership. ranged from two thousand eleven to twenty sixteen. That is a very long time to be run by receivership and not by the local communities that the schools serve.
That's a good point. All right, I will make a motion to support Resolution number four, preserving local government, governance of Massachusetts schools.
And I will second that.
Any discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Ness?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.
Okay, number five is personal, Resolution number five, personal financial literacy education. And therefore be it resolved that MASC file legislation that would have the effect of ensuring that all students have exposure to personal financial literacy curricula and ultimately graduate from high school with a lifelong knowledge of how to be fiscally responsible, to avoid being deterred by financial woes. This legislation would ensure that the students at various levels would benefit from curriculum in Massachusetts public schools, which would include content in personal financial literacy. So, this one was, is encouraging MASC to file legislation to ensure that all students have, are access to the financial literacy and that they come out knowing the best options for paying college tuition, using credit cards, and securing personal loans, among other things. Any questions?
I guess another one's a long overdue.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so I'll make a motion to support Resolution number five, personal financial literacy education.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Ness?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
I am an aye as well.
Okay, and finally, Resolution number six, establishment of a regional school assessment reserve fund. This one was sponsored by the Silver Lake Regional School Committee and it doesn't, wouldn't really impact Hingham. But we, we can act on it if we want to. So, this one is therefore be it resolved that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees calls upon the Massachusetts Legislature to enact or amend legislation which permits municipalities to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund. So, it's, yeah, I just, it's, I believe it adds, it allows municipalities to establish a reserve fund similar to the Special Ed Reserve Fund in case there are big swings in, in their funding. So, any questions on this one?
Just treating regional school districts like singular school districts, right?
See, so I'll just say, I don't feel qualified to weigh in on this. Just reading through this, I did go down a rabbit hole of how regional districts are funded for a little while and decided not to, not to do it. But, uh, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not really sure. Do you, do either of you have any insight on, on this, like how?
I think the regional, usually regional school committees each have their own school committee in the towns and then they each fund it through their own local budget.
But each regional school committee could be different in how they've governed or organized themselves.
Right.
Depending on their own bylaws in town.
Yep.
So.
I know in some districts it can be split too based on, at the elementary and secondary levels.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Sorry, just when Matt joined us, and Matt, thank you. I'm going through the resolutions.
So, I'm wondering if the, if it sounds like there, some of these regions, that they're set up differently.
I think this allows them to create an account that allows them to add like a reserve fund that allows them to adjust if there are swings in their financial status between the towns or whatever. As a kind of like a reserve fund that they agree to.
Does anyone have any thoughts on this one?
Um, Carrie, how are you feeling about this one? Do you feel like we're, it does feel a little strange to, I don't know, it just doesn't, like, it's not something that we are familiar with, so I don't know how you feel about making a motion for this one or tabling this or not acting on this one? What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I would think not acting on it, just I'd want to have a better understanding.
Yeah.
And it's not something that applies to us, so.
It feels weird not being a regional district to vote on something.
To weigh in on that.
To weigh in on a regional district.
Yeah. Does anyone on the committee disagree with not taking action on this resolution?
Would it be an option if our representatives, thank you Carrie for representing us at the meeting? But if Carrie goes to the meeting and gets more information and become, like, do we want to empower her or should we just say no action? I don't know if that would even be an option or something we'd want to consider.
I know. I, I was thinking that as well, Tim. But to be honest, I don't know that that is an option for us to do. Feels...
Thinking no action feels like a good option.
Yeah, I'm thinking so. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so Carrie, your recommendation is no action on this item?
Yep.
All right, um, all right, so for this one, let me just make that known. So, let's, I'll take a quick roll call vote. Oh, sorry, does somebody want to make a motion to not take action?
Do we need a motion to not take action?
Yeah. I don't think we need one.
All right, I just take the, all right.
If we make a motion, we could all abstain.
I'm happy, you don't think we do.
All right, you know, I'll make a motion and then let's all vote against it. So, right?
But then it looks like we don't support it.
Oh, that's true.
Where really we're just, the message we're sending is we're not taking action.
Yeah.
We don't want to say we're opposed to it.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Right, exactly. That's what I was gonna say. So, I don't want to vote against it. All right, so we just want to...
Do we make a motion and all abstain?
Exactly. All right, and that is it.
And that was the last one, right?
Yep. That wasn't too bad.
All right, great. Carrie, thank you so much for going through all those and presenting them tonight so you can represent us at the conference next week.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah. All right, so that will move on to seven point five, which is to discuss a connecting activities grant and to act as appropriate. Dr. Adams?
So, you have an agreement to partner with the City of Quincy and the South Shore Mass Hire, South Shore Workforce Board for the implementation of the Connecting Activities Initiative during the school year. The activities are funded through a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The amount is seven thousand dollars. You'll also see there it, the activities that will be funded through Hingham High School, which include a job fair for students by networking with Mass Hire, the Hingham Chamber of Commerce, and small business associations to help students connect with part-time jobs, a career exploration event where we'll utilize speakers in, in, to have students understand apprenticeships and trades and non-traditional career paths, and a Hingham Community Service Day, and some workshops on job readiness skills, including some soft skills of problem solving, safety interview skills, resume building, attendance and punctuality, and communication in, on the job. The seven thousand dollar grant award will fund transportation costs, workshop speakers and resources, and some staff stipends.
Amazing. Thank you. Just someone want to make a motion to accept the grant?
I will make a motion. I will make a motion to approve partnering with the City of Quincy, South Shore Mass Hire, South Shore Workforce Board, and to accept the grant of seven thousand for the purpose of obtaining career development education activities.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing no hands raised, I'll take a roll call vote. Ness?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Great. All right, and then seven point six, on to discuss a Metco grant and act as appropriate. And just because Matt joined us, Matt, we did talk about this really briefly earlier when Amy gave the Metco update, but we can do a quick recap so you're prepared when we make a motion, if you don't mind.
Sure. This grant, Amy Jackson, in collaboration with Joanne Bellis, the Director of Fine Arts, applied for mini grants of, and she was surprised to have won three of them in eighteen hundred, fifteen hundred, and a one thousand through Metco. The proposal is meant to provide an opportunity for cultural performances that fund performing arts and celebrate diversity, cultural difference, social justice. And it would be open to either, she particularly is focused on presentations to students. She's, has identified one artist, Len Cabral, who works on, focuses on storytelling in addition to two other presenters. She hasn't quite identified where or when this will happen, but she's hoping to finalize some of those details. So, your approval of these three grants will allow that to move forward.
I will...
Thank you for the, for the call. So, I want to make a motion to accept this grant?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the three mini grants of eighteen hundred, fifteen hundred, and a thousand provided by Metco headquarters for the purpose of funding performing, performing arts activities provided by Dialogues on Diversity.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions back there? Are you good? All right, hearing none, I'll take another roll call vote to accept the motion to accept the Metco grants. Ness?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
All right, and I am an aye as well. Great work in getting those grants. Thank you to Amy and Joanne for doing those. All right, item seven point seven is to declare a surplus of materials and act as appropriate. Dr. Adams, is I used to doing this?
Yes, I could. So, so we, I think that librarians are going through a review. They haven't done a review, review since, I think, probably before COVID. So, they're definitely going through the libraries and trying to determine which items are old or no longer in circulation and providing us with lists. So, I think we'll be getting these lists week after week in terms of getting your approval on this. So, just want to get your approval. We've had discussions and we've confirmed that these books are in fact out of circulation and, and or destroyed or damaged. So, I would appreciate if you could declare these as surplus, please.
And Ayesha did go back and talk to the librarians and these, as you can see by the, the date these books were acquired, they're twen, almost twenty-two years old. They're either not in circulation anymore. Librarians love their books and so if they're making a decision to move them out, it's because they're damaged. They really are not circulating among the students and making space for other more recent collections that students will access is a top priority of theirs. So, that's why this particular list, you'll see, many of them are almost twenty years old.
Thank you. Does someone want to make a motion to declare the surplus?
Sure. I will make a motion to declare a surplus. High school library titles listed and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose the books at the least cost to Hingham.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Ness?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Great, thank you. Thank you to the librarians for doing all that work to find those very old and outdated materials. Um, all right.
Can I ask a brief question? Can I ask a brief question? What is the disposal process for these books?
So, so generally, in terms of, the librarians will try to find a way whether it is to donate those books to other people who may need them as a first pass at it. Or in some cases, if they, usually it is a donation, or if it is that they can get them sold at a cheaper price, they will do that as well. So, just generally in terms of surplus items, that is the process that we will go through.
I just wanted to see if they're being donated or being...
Yes, yeah. As a last resort, they would probably be thrown away. If nobody wants them, well, there's no way to get them disposed of at that price.
Great question. Um, great. Item eight, we will move on to subcommittee and project reports. I will, I'll start with Matt.
So, we had our first East Council meeting, I want to say last week, I think it was last week. And we, it was great to get the opportunity to meet the new principal and kind of reconstitute this council. Our main focus was on a draft of the school improvement plan. And so, it was just a very initial first draft, but I think it was a very good first draft. And we'll be making, or as a council, we'll be making updates over the next couple of months, I guess. And I think, I think we're coming in December. Someone does that, I've lost track of the schedule, but I think it's December when we come to have a review with the book.
Great, thank you. Ally?
Thank you, Michelle. As Dr. Adams and Nathan both mentioned, the Hingham Arts Alliance was a sponsor to the Arts Rock this weekend, which was excellent. Some really great student performances, a lot of great artwork by kids from all, all throughout the town and all ages. And just a really fun afternoon. Rain did not stop anyone. And if you haven't bought your tickets for Music Man after seeing them on Sunday, I highly recommend that you get them before they sell out. The Hingham Arts Alliance is also having a board meeting on the eighth of November. And then the Pira School Council is meeting tomorrow for their first meeting, so I'll report back on that at the next meeting. But I also was very honored to be asked to go to one of their all-school meetings because they're voting on a new outfit for their wizard. Currently, he has not ever changed his clothes and needed a little clothing and style update. So, they had their vote last week and they wanted to make sure that kids learned about civic responsibility and voting protocols and ensure that it was a fair election. So, I, you know, I'm not sure I'm uniquely qualified to do that, but I was there to oversee their election. And then finally, Climate Action Planning Committee is meeting on the twenty-sixth this week to discuss foster school and to see if they want to put out a statement in regards to their opinion on the vote for that. And that's all from me.
Great, thank you. Tim?
Sure. CPAC, the Special Education Parents Advisory Council, is having, looks like a great event tomorrow at the library. At seven o'clock, they're having a dyslexia conversation where they're gonna have a speech and language pathologist, Lauren Parker, and a special education eternity, Kate Sullivan, come and speak about best practices with dyslexia and have sort of, it's gonna be a discussion with parents. The Special Education Subcommittee is meeting on Thursday at four fifteen in Town Hall. And, yeah, we're gonna be, as part of the meeting, we're gonna be continuing that discussion on dyslexia. So, looking forward to that. The Hingham Educational Foundation has had a busy couple of weeks. On Friday, they had a really fun party that was down in Hall and cornhole tournament, and it was well-attended and it was a good time. I went. And the, their next event is November sixth. They're bringing back the Hingham Spelling Bee, which is really exciting to people who remember the Spelling Bee. That was pre-COVID, I think, was the last time they had it. So, that'll be really fun. The registration is open on their website, hinghameducation.org. And the, last but not least, the Human Rights Coalition is meeting on Wednesday, Wednesday at seven o'clock in Town Hall. And those meetings are open to the public. A lot of people have been sort of curious about what the Human Rights Commission has been doing since they started up. So to remind people that the meetings are open to the public.
I'm sorry, Tim, what was the date on that?
On,
The Hingham Ri, Hingham Ri,
It's on Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you.
What was the date on that? It was on Wednesday?
It was on Wednesday, Wednesday at 7 o'clock. It will be, the date.
October 26th.
Thank you very much. Quick math.
Thank you. Carrie?
So Salary and Negotiations has two meetings scheduled, one on Wednesday and one on November 1st. So we'll be doing that. The Hingham Middle School Council was supposed to meet today, but the agenda wasn't posted, posted in time. This is the second time that this has happened this year. I was wondering, is it happening at the other schools? Has anyone had issues with that?
No.
No.
Well, I just happened to notice that there were three posted for this week at the other elementary schools.
Okay, yeah, so we were scheduled for Thursday, so, and I think it was, that one was posted in time. But is that going to be covered in the training for the, okay, that's good. But anyway, it should be, it's a really engaged group, so, looking forward to it. So Jen and Ally and I met with the Student Advisory Council last Wednesday, October 19th. It was a great group. Nathan covered most of it. But I just wanted to point out that we learned that most of the races for the, the different grade representatives were competitive this year, so that's great.
It was, I think it was all but the sophomore election, well, yeah, sophomore election were competitive and I was really excited about that. I think we had like five or six candidates. I'm trying to remember, we had a lot of candidates for that senior spot.
Oh, great.
And the other two were both competitive elections, so I was really happy about that.
Yeah, it's cool to see the engagement, so, great. So I'll have.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Jen?
Um, I just, all I have is that Ally will be attending the South School School Council. It's their first one of the year on this Wednesday, October 26th.
Great, thank you. Ness?
Yes, apologies for not being on screen, but my reception is not great. Just a couple of updates, finances, some warrants in your packet. And I have started the process of sending you all in a shared folder the approved Finance and Capital Subcommittee minutes. And I attached the May 31st minutes for you to view that. And then on Foster School Council, our next meeting is this one. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we lost you, I think, for a second.
Okay. This meeting is this Wednesday, and that was it.
Sorry, Foster School this Wednesday?
Yep, that's right.
Alright.
There's a lot of meetings on the, I suppose.
Alright, um, thank you, everybody.
Michelle, it's my,
I have new updates. The high school council had their first meeting last Wednesday. Um, we believe that the high school council has made a high school council history in that we elected a new co-chair who is a student, Dasper Lee. So Dasper Lee will be serving as the co-chairs of the Hingham High School Council. We went over our school improvement planning for the year and the five areas of focus. There were five areas of focus at the high school. One, to promote civic engagement among students. Two, to consider bringing on a community service component to the, the education curriculum at the high school and how that might look. Nathan, I'm not sure if Mr. Swanson has reached out, but he was going to reach out to the Student Advisory Council to get some input from students on what that might look like, a requirement, what grade, what year would it be done, so, some, some good work there.
Yeah, and especially, just quick, quickly, I'd say, I haven't heard back from yet, but especially with Jasper now taking on the lead as a student co-chair, which congratulations to him for that. I think some coordination between those two councils on some of that work could be very positive and good for that.
Yes, thanks, you know, we were very happy about that. Um, thank you. Um, one of the other parts of the, and plan will be to explore pathways for students, so Dr. Adams, I think, had some, this was an idea that Dr. Adams had brought to the schools, so to add a pathway for, let's say, the arts or a pathway for vocational training. So that's going to be something the school council is going to be exploring, implementing curriculum pathways. We are also going to be promoting environmental stewardship. That has been one of the goals of the school improvement plan for several years. And then the final piece of the school improvement plan is to continue to build community and promote belongingness at the high school. So five lofty goals for the year. And some of those are through work that will never be fully completed. Some of them will be, but some are ongoing efforts. It's a great group at the high school, really robust group. It's about, I think there are 17 members on the high school council, so it's a great group. I just want to give everybody an update on School Building Committee. There was a planning board meeting tonight at the same time as our night, as our meetings. I'm not sure that meeting has concluded, but they were potentially voting tonight on the permitting for the new elementary school to replace Foster. The Conservation Committee did approve the permitting that we needed from them last week at their meeting for the new school. There will be a School Building Committee meeting Wednesday night. If any folks want to attend that, that will be our final meeting of that committee before the town meeting vote. Dr. Adams, Katie Hartman, members of the School Building Committee, other members of the leadership team, Matthew Shuffley, and multiple people have participated and contributed to several forums that have been held across town, in person at Town Hall, the middle school on Zoom, and then tours of the building. And I just really want to thank everyone who put so much time. I know I'm not finding, I'm not, I'm not naming everybody, but Ayesha put in a ton of time, worked, had a passion in it as well. So thank you so much, everyone who participated in those and all the folks in the district who went above and beyond to facilitate those, to get ready for them, to bear for them. It's really, really greatly appreciated. You have a really good compelling story to tell about Foster School and the need for a new school building to replace it. I don't think at this moment anyone disagrees with that now. I think we told that story very well. So I was at South School on Friday for their harvest party. The PTO invited us, a couple of members of the School Building Committee, to attend and share information with families, answer questions. It was really great engagement. So appreciate that invite there. So I'll just put my, my last plug in for, our next meeting actually will be, we will be adjourned, we'll be calling to order to attend and participate in the November 1st Special Town Meeting. Encourage everyone out in the community to please come out. Please come to the Special Town Meeting. There are lots of things, investments that the town needs to make, and there will be important discussion and deliberation at that Special Town Meeting. And this is your opportunity to make your voice heard for not only the new elementary school to replace the Foster Elementary School, but also the public safety. And also another third important vote on how we may spend some of our reserve funds. So please do everything you can to attend that meeting. And then also just a reminder that these warrant articles require, the two debt exclusion votes require two-thirds majority at town meeting. And then there's a separate ballot vote on November 8th during the general election. We are, the two, the two questions for the debt exclusion are question numbers five and six on the ballots on November 8th. So please be sure to vote at town meeting and on the ballot. I think that is all that I have.
Can I say one thing? I forgot, Michelle.
Yes, sure.
Sure, I just wanted to thank Matt and Jen for doing the office hours last week. And our next office hours are going to be on November 21st. So just getting that date out there. We'll re-announce it at the next meeting, but.
Tim, who signed up for the 21st?
21st, we have Ness and Jen. I don't know if Jen's doing two in a row, if Michelle's going to take hers.
I can do it.
Okay, so next one is going to be Ness and Jen.
Can I propose something?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it would be possible to alternate Zoom versus in-person because we haven't had many attendees at the in-person. We haven't had any.
Right.
And I don't know if it's just the, the time of year and people are just really busy and maybe a Zoom option every other month might be more accommodating to families.
I'm thinking that might be a little bit more of a discussion. So why don't we put that as a discussion on the next meeting, just to check in about office hours?
Yeah, it might be a good discussion to discuss if, double discussion, to see if it makes sense, given town meeting and all this stuff going on right now. If we want to push till we get into budget talks, when people are a little more engaged in the next, next topic.
Maybe we can put that on the agenda.
Alright, I'm looking over at Michelle.
Alright, I made a note.
Can I bring up one thing for the future, just as a potential, can I speak?
Sure.
Yeah, just as a future kind of long-term planning thing, I think it might be a good idea to take a look on bringing more student involvement into town committees as a whole, not just on school committee. We've really expanded with the Student Advisory Committee stuff and we did a Human Rights Commission appointment too. But I would think it'd be a good idea if we could take like a look on where we've appointed students because, and get kind of a tab of that, because I know we have people in the high school council too. But, and then look at potentially, I know getting participation is always difficult, but potentially bringing more student representatives on to subcommittees for the school committee and for the town in general, because I think that it would be really valuable to both build that culture of civic engagement at the high school and in the school system, but to also just bring a perspective that has kind of been underrepresented historically in town committees. So that is something I think that would be good for the committee to look at in the future.
That's a good idea.
Great, that's a great suggestion. Thank you. Alright, um, any number nine, are any items 48 hours in advance the meeting? Dr. Adams, do you have anything?
No.
No, any members of committee? Alright, alright, so just quickly, a reminder before we adjourn, our, our next meeting will be the, to attend and participate in the Special Town Meeting on November 1st. On November 9th, we are having a joint meeting with ACES and the Chair of the Select Board. That will start at 6:00 PM. That is a preliminary budget meeting. And then our next scheduled meeting is November 14th at 7:00 PM. So with that, I will, one before another, quick message. Just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Sorry for the audio issues we had at the beginning. I'm glad folks stayed engaged and stayed on the line or called back in once we got those sorted out. And appreciate everyone in person for helping myself, Matt, and Ness deal with things we had to deal with that were out of town today so that we could still have this important meeting, because we really did want to have this meeting, particularly with the town meeting coming up. So thank you, everyone, for allowing us to do it this way. So with that, I will take a meeting to adjourn, or motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alright, and we've got to do a roll call. Ness?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye. Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Carrie, did you go?
I did, I, I've got the gavel ring.
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I am an I as well, and I will ask Carrie to take the power back and thank you.